Okay. Welcome back to our meeting. It's 1:15. We will start with our 6.6 item, 11:30 a.m. Presentation and Acceptance of Big Valley Groundwater Sustainable Agency, GSA Charter Document. Water Resources?
Hello. Good afternoon, Board. Marina Delajanas, Lake County Watership Protection District Deputy Director. I am speaking to you all as the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency, GSA, on behalf of the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency Advisory Committee, also referred to as GSPAC. I am here today to talk to you about our Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee Charter Document, our GSPAC Charter. I would just like to note that in the memo, the title didn't say GSA Charter, but it's in fact the GSPAC Charter. But the memo, if you read further, and it did clarify that, and the document at hand does state that it's the GSPAC Charter. So how today is going to work? I'm just going to go ahead and share my screen, if that is okay with you. We'll walk through the GSPAC Charter. Of course, I'll open it up to the GSA if there's any questions, and then the public. And then, of course, the goal of today is to adopt our GSPAC Charter to replace the 2021 GSPAC Charter that currently stands. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. All right. So I'm not going to read this word for word, as much as I would love to. I'm just going to hit some high-level aspects of the Charter. So as shared in the memo and as stated during the introduction, your board has seen this. The GSA, the Big Valley GSA, has seen a Charter of this nature before. There's been some minor changes to the Charter from the first one that was adopted in 2021. And the few minor changes that have been made from the previous Charter to this current Charter is just changing from the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act Planning and Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Planning to now Implementation. As I've come to your board before, we are well into the implementation aspect of our Big Valley GSP. Before I keep going, can you all see my Charter document okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right. So as an introduction, you all are all familiar and very well-versed in the California Sustainable Groundwater Management Act of 2014 by now. So as I've shared in previous updates to the Board and the GSA, Sigma provides a framework for us at the local level to implement Big Valley GSP, our groundwater sustainability plan, and ensure sustainability of our Big Valley groundwater basin looking well beyond 2042. So as required by Sigma, we are tasked to form a GSA, a Groundwater Sustainability Agency, that is our Board of Directors of the Watership Protection District. And when we adopted and formed that GSA in 2019, the GSA also elected to form an Advisory Committee, which is our Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee, also referred to as our GSPAC. So this is the Charter for that GSPAC. It basically lets the community know in our GSPAC what our goals are, objectives, and how we act as in the advisory capacity to our Big Valley GSA. So as shared, our GSPAC was initially formed in April of 2021 to advise the Lake County Board of Supervisors, also known as our Big Valley GSA, for the planning of our Big Valley GSP, and now we're transitioning into the implementation. Moving on down to background and importance, I just want to thank the GSPAC members that helped us develop and plan for our Big Valley GSP. You'll see a few familiar names in our Charter document as I move down into this document. But we do have some open seats that I'll be highlighting here during this discussion and then continue on during our quarterly GSPAC meetings that we've been hosting. So again, I just want to give appreciation to those Advisory Committee members and looking forward to working, to continue working with them as we work towards the implementation of our Big Valley GSP. So our mission, key tasks, and deliverables for our GSPAC is to review data, resources, and GSP-related content and provide guidance to the Big Valley GSA that is charged with implementing our GSP. I'm going to highlight some of these key tasks here, moving down to this bulleted point list. So our GSPAC is charged with groundwater-focused activities, including holding regularly quarterly meetings to discuss progress on GSP implementation, receiving background information, data, and technical content updates, conducting GSP and GSP-related content review, providing community education and outreach, and ongoing updates to the designated community groups they represent, including the GSA, review of project and management actions that we have listed in our Big Valley GSP, and providing guidance, of course, to our Big Valley GSA as it relates to our Big Valley GSP and community engagement. Now highlighting some of our outcomes, products and recommendations of the group will be transmitted through the GSPAC Advisory Committee to the GSA as the Standing Board of Directors for our Big Valley GSA. GSPAC recommendations will be provided in meeting summaries, periodic reports, and via updates to the Big Valley GSA Board of Directors during regularly noticed Board meetings of Lake County Board of Supervisors, similar to what we are doing today. The recommendations will identify the range of group perspectives and areas of agreement and disagreement on GSP-related matters. Recommendations will be given to the highest level of consideration in the implementation of our Big Valley GSP. So organizational structure and membership, this is very much guided by Sigma and what we are required to do by Sigma. Again, Sigma provides us that framework, but it's up to us at the local level to put that in, put that expertise as it relates to our Big Valley Basin. So for example, Sigma lets us know who should sit on an Advisory Committee, specifically Water Code 10723.2, but it's up to us to fill in those gaps, right? So based off of Water Code and discussing with our state, our community users in that group, we were able to identify some of our beneficial users and then also add additional seats from the previous GSPAC Charter. And again, this all went through our GSPAC through recommendations from the Board. So with the GSPAC, we did decide to recommend to add one additional seat, and that is an underrepresented user. So I'll go through each of these members that we have on our GSPAC and then highlight some of the open seats that we currently have. And I hope you all can see that I made it a little bit smaller, but I wanted to fit these all on the screen. So we have three current agricultural users that are remaining on our GSPAC, from the planning GSPAC to now the implementation GSPAC. We joke and refer to it as GSPAC 2.0. For agricultural user, we have Rebecca Harper with the Lake County Farm Bureau. We also have Pat Scully with Scully Packing Company and David Wise with Bella Vista Farming Company. All three of these entities were, also helped us in the planning of our Big Valley GSP. We have two environmental and ecosystem seats. We have Val Nixon representing the Lake County Land Trust, and we currently have an open environmental ecosystem restoration seat. We formerly had Peter Windrum with the Chi Council, who unfortunately had to step away. So that is an open seat that we currently have on our GSPAC. We have two open underrepresented user seats. We have not been able to fill the first seat that we had, and it was the recommendation of the GSPAC to add another seat. This has been an ongoing goal and objective. We're going to continue to try and fill in this seat. I would just like to note that with these open seats, we do have later on in the Charter, and what we've done in the past is even if we don't have all the seats filled right now with this Charter that is going before the GSA, we will be able to bring recommendations moving forward once we adopt this Charter, the GSA adopts this Charter, to make amendments and include those folks in there. We are actively discussing and engaging with folks to try and get these seats filled up, and we have those discussions during our public GSPAC meetings. So we have currently two underrepresented user seats open. We have one private user, domestic well owner seat, formerly seated by Sky Hoyt, who was a domestic well owner. Again, fortunately, Sky had to step away, so that is an open seat. And then another private user seat that is open, formerly had a representative from Kelseyville Unified School District. We have Sarah Ryan with Big Valley Band of Homo Indians, who sits on our tribal government seat. And then we have two urban users, Scott Hornig with Lake County Special Districts, and then myself with the Watershed Protection District. So with these open, with these GSPAC seats, we do have a lead for the GSPAC. It was formerly me in the planning, and then now it's currently me still with the implementation aspect. So I will still remain in the seat as lead for GSPAC on behalf of the Watershed Protection District, so we are the lead at the local level for implementing Sigma. So key resources, again, I want to give a huge shout out and thanks to our GSPAC members, the new ones that have stepped in, and then also the ones that we have been working with for the last few years as it relates to our Big Valley GSP planning and implementation. But we've also had additional resources that have been very beneficial to our GSPAC. So we understand that our community members in the basin know the basin, they work in the basin, they live in the basin, they have been, they're the key experts, but understanding that we also need additional resources and expertise as well. So as you are all familiar with, we onboarded a consultant to help us with the GSP planning. We will continue to utilize consulting services through the county purchasing code and, as funds allow, to help us with the implementation aspect of our GSP. This includes GSP technical contractor staff. As you can see, there's no specific names in here. We're keeping it broad because it depends on which project we're going to tackle and what component, but we do want to highlight that in our GSPAC Charter, that our GSPAC will continue, and we do have the goal of continuing to work with additional expertise. And of course, I want to give a big thanks to our Lake County Watership Protection staff. William Foxer, Program Coordinator, does a great job of helping with our groundwater management, and we have an awesome new technician, Mitchell, who has been really great in getting up to speed in terms of groundwater monitoring. And again, we were able to utilize a lot of support and resources from the state, one being our facilitation support services. They really helped us with the facilitation of our GSPAC meetings, helping prepare agendas, helping bring items to the Board, helping do facilitation during these public meetings, and open houses as it relates to our Big Valley GSP, and then meeting summaries, which has been a big help. We are in limbo with the state right now. That is a free service that we write an application for, and the state works directly with a third-party consultant to help provide that expertise to us, so it's no money out of our pockets. It really helps our staff fill in the capacity that we're lacking, and we are planning on getting those services restarted again. We're just waiting for the state to finalize that contract. So once we get those facilitators back in place, we're hoping that that will help us carry some of the weight as it relates to GSP, Big Valley implementation, and especially facilitation support services, because you can see we have a few seats that we need to fill. So those facilitators will be able to help us provide that, fill in those gaps. Now, attendance is an open process since we are an Advisory Committee and we work for the, and we work very closely with the GSA. We do follow Brown Act compliance. Our GSPAC has been updated a few times now from our friends, County Council, who have come to us, given us an update and overview of Brown Act, and we can, will continue to provide those updates. And we do follow all of that Brown Act compliance, so these are all public meetings. Members of the public are encouraged to participate. We have a listserv, I'll keep saying that, where you can get those agendas for our quarterly meetings and any special meetings that we have. We currently meet on the, I believe, the third or fourth Friday of the month, 11 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. via Zoom on a quarterly basis, and those, all of those meetings, past meetings are recorded, including documents on our Water Resources website and Water Resources YouTube, and we do post those on our website, and then we post those in a public format as well. If you're not able to Zoom in, we do have the ability to host you here in the Lake County Courthouse, and our GSPAC members are also able to help host if that is of interest to the public, because we do want to make sure that we make these meeting spaces as equitable and attainable as possible for our users in this basin. So the decision-making process, I would like to note, our GSPAC is not a voting group. They are consensus-seeking. So we follow, you can see the criteria as I go down here, and it is the GSA that's actually the vote. So our GSPAC, we provide recommendations, we seek consensus on whether it be projects or different things as it relates to our Big Valley GSP, but ultimately, we bring that to the GSA for voting, because we, as a GSPAC, are not a voting. We seek consensus. And here is the protocol that we use during the Big Valley GSP development. For example, we were able, when it comes to our Big Valley GSP, when the Board officially adopted the GSA, we were able to solicit all comments, not only from the public, but our GSPAC on different chapters and et cetera, and we were able to compile all that, bring it to the GSA, who ultimately voted to approve and adopt our GSA. So the voting criteria that we say, and please see my air quotes when I say "voting," the consensus-seeking criteria that we use, that our GSPAC members go through, is one, wholly endorsed, meaning that they strongly support the proposal; two, endorsement with minor issues, they generally like it, proceed with their support; three, conditional agreement, they can support it if some steps are taken now or in the future; four, which is neutral, they neither support nor reject the proposal, they can proceed; five, disagreement, they do not agree with the proposal in its current form but will not reject it outright; and six, rejection completely, they cannot support the proposal. So we take this consensus-seeking on something that we would bring to the Board. For example, filling in these seats, we would use this consensus-seeking criteria for members of the public that are interested in filling in a vacant seat. We would go through, collect each consensus-seeking from the GSPAC members, and then with that recommendation or whatnot, we would bring it to the GSA with those comments. If a GSPAC member is on any project or on anything that we're seeking consensus on, if they vote anything higher than two, we do seek additional comment so they can elaborate on why they voted or voted with the number that, the way that they did. So duration and completion date, the recharter GSPAC will be formally acknowledged upon the Big Valley GSA review and approval of this Charter, regularly scheduled, as I said, quarterly meetings. I would like to note that there are a few dates in here that were changed. For example, there was one date that was 2022. I modified that to reflect the new year, 2023. Not sure where this year has gone, but it's early February, so I wanted to make those updates in this document. And then participation and process of agreements, again, this just holds our GSPAC members accountable. We've gone through this Charter document for, through four different GSPAC meetings at least, and collected comments, and we've gone through this as a GSPAC, so they know their roles, especially as it comes to now from the planning to the implementation. It's going to look a lot different. So every GSPAC member has seen this Charter document, has been able to make comments, and we've gone through it together to create the one that you're seeing now, so they can know what they're signing up for, right? So they know, you know, what they're required to do, come prepared, participate in public meeting, provide inputs, and then, of course, meeting attendance. It's very crucial for our GSPAC members to participate in these meetings and being able to review and prepare documents that were requested of them, and they all do a great job of doing such. We know it's a hefty load, so I do appreciate all the work that they've been able to provide to date. They've made this process very enjoyable, and very much appreciated getting their input and expertise. And then just the latter part of page of the documents, just identifying additional resources, as I said, we meet on a virtual, in a virtual capacity, hybrid option as well in a public setting, and we follow Brown Act compliance. All of our historical meetings are documented and archived on our Water Resources website. And then we also stay inherent, understanding that things may change before we can bring this back to the Board for a 2024 Charter in a year. We understand that if amendments are appropriate, we are always willing to take any recommendations from the GSA to later amend this Charter document, or again, if we need to fill in a seat, we can make amendments to this Charter document with, including additional names with additional seats that we will have and filling in the vacant seats that we have. And then the last aspect of it is just the Charter acceptance date. Ideally, we'd put today's date if approved by the GSA, and then we would put this on our Water Resources website stating that we have approved, the GSA has approved this Charter document, and this is our new Charter document, our standing Charter document for our Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee. That's what I have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the Board? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you for that, and thank you for the clarification that we're sitting here talking about the Charter for the GSPAC, the GSP Advisory Committee. I'm new to this, so I'm just getting into it. So I'm looking at the Regulation 10723.2 that basically outlines in the regs all the interests of all beneficial uses and users, and so I think that's sliced and diced, but that particular regulation doesn't require or authorize or limit. It doesn't, that regulation doesn't speak directly to the notion of an Advisory Committee or the, or the use of charters to create such Advisory Committees. Advisory Committee certainly would be a, one way to consider all the interests of all the beneficial uses and users. So I'm just looking at this drill-down list. I did see in here on this drill-down list that local land use planning agencies should be represented. So in this current iteration of the, of the GSPAC, is there going to be a seat for CDD?
So that has come up a few times, Supervisor Green, and again, we have these in-depth dialogues. We've had additional special meetings talking about filling in the vacant seats. CDD has come up, environmental health has come up, since they, since they do the well permitting as well. So these are all ideas that we've discussed. We've also discussed on just inviting these other county entities to participate in these meetings, but not necessarily hold a seat since they do have the expertise. So these are all ideas that the GSPAC has discussed and considered, but it has not been brought forward to the GSA to add an additional seat for county, county CDD.
Okay. Well, I'm open to hearing more about the history. It appears there's broad authority for the GSA to implement these regulations. I assume that the creation of an Advisory Committee and the Charter reflects previous direction of the GSA to do so, but I would just like, if we're going to move forward with this, maybe just have a little bit of dialogue about whether all the people in these regulations that are mentioned here. Yeah, now that you mention EH, that probably would make some sense, too. So totally on board with the idea, totally on board with the Charter, just wondering if, despite the difficulty of filling seats, there appears to be some interest in Sigma that we have those seats filled with the local land use planning agencies and environmental uses of groundwater.
Yeah, and I would just like to add that, you know, this discussion, we've, you know, for over a year now, going on two years, we've had continuous dialogue during our Advisory Committee documents and special meetings on what seats are need to be filled. So this has been a continued discussion, and we're going to continue to have these discussions. We're having a meeting mid-March. We're going to get that date out by Thursday morning of when that rescheduled GSPAC meeting is, and it's going to, the strong focus is going to be on who needs to be at the table and how can we make it more accessible, et cetera. And again, specifically talking about these seats. So that's where some of our facilitators have come through, help us provide some input. We've gotten input from the state, we've got input from other experts around the state, and again, just leaning on our GSPAC. So we do have some folks that could possibly fill in some of these vacant seats. And again, it's just going to be an ongoing thing of, you know, continuously looking at our Charter and our GSP of who's missing, who do we need to bring to the table? So it's been a continued dialogue for the past two years now.
I appreciate that. I just think, since we are here today for the specific purpose of accepting this Charter, if there is something missing from the laundry list, I think today would be the day to address it, not a future meeting. That's just me. Thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Three things. First off, thank you for your presentation on this. On the resources portion that you spoke about, the Zoom meetings being available, it kind of reads awkwardly in the sense that it sounds like meetings will be held virtually rather than they will also be held virtually, because right now, the way the Brown Act is reading, it's you do it in person, and it almost speaks like we're still in 2021 or 2022, just kind of wondering if that might need to be changed to make sure that the Charter reads with what's actually happening. And I get it that you also want to provide a Zoom option so that people could come in, but at the same time, you speak of the Brown Act, and the Brown Act is requesting that we all meet in person with caveats of who and how you can meet virtually. So just, I think possibly just adding the "other than in-person," scheduled GSPAC meetings will be held virtually, something like that, I think would be appropriate, just to get picky on that part. And then, is there a potential exit strategy out of this? Because I know that it's, it costs us money to continuously through 2042 have this GSA, but is there data that can be provided to the state where it allows us to have the exit strategy that we are no longer seen as a Sigma area? Maybe I'm not saying that appropriately, but I know that we revised our numbers for Upper Lake, where originally that was in Sigma, and we were supposed to do the same type of analysis and review and formation. Is there something within this Charter that if enough positive data comes out of it, that we can produce that to the state?
That's a good question, Supervisor Sabatier. So I've been working on Sigma from, since 2019 now, and I also sit on a state-level organization that works very closely with legislative and lawmakers regarding Sigma. And based off of conversations I've been having with the state since 2019, I don't want to say for certain, I don't have my crystal ball that can predict the future, but it's not in our best interest to try and pursue getting out of a priority basin for Sigma. The state is not leaning in that direction. Every basin that they've already established as priority basin is going to stick to priority basin, and that was something that the GSA, if they're interested in pursuing, I would recommend the GSA take that, but I don't see it happening. We are very far into this, into Sigma. We've already spent, you know, $1.4 million in GSP planning, and, you know, now we're towards implementation. So it just wouldn't be in our best interest to try and move that direction, because I don't see that happening. You know, when we did make that modification and give that land, that land use update a few years back, that would have been the time to do it, but the state wasn't considering our Big Valley, our Big Valley basin. And from my understanding and dialogue with the state, the reason why they have our Big Valley basin as a priority basin is because of just the agricultural use in the area and the streams that we have. So it's just, again, a cautionary measure. You're right, it is going to take, you know, it is going to take a lot of staff time. It has taken a lot of staff time, resources, and funding, but we, on the Watership Protection District's behalf, we are actively seeking funding opportunities. We have applied for funding opportunities to try and lessen the burden, the financial impact that, complying with Sigma, will take.
Okay. Had to try.
Appreciate it.
And then the last one is, I'm looking at the list of members, and I agree with Supervisor Green that this is a good day to have this discussion if we're going to have any changes. And I'm trying to look at a fair, equitable membership, and so I'll just read out what I see. I see three agricultural users as members. I see two environmental ecosystem members, underrepresented, there's two members, private users, there's two members, urban users, there's two members, and then tribal government, there's one member. It just feels like that is not an equitable placement of membership, especially when tribal comes down to just one, when everyone else has two or more. And just, I think that adding one tribal, I think, would provide a bit more of an equitable membership. It doesn't provide any majority where tribal perspective would be able to maneuver through this GSA process and what their potential needs or wants are, but I think it provides a fair membership count. So that's the only things that I had in front of me.
Thank you.
And I just want to, I did notice that, but then I noticed the only native sovereign nation within the GSA area is Big Valley. So, and it's not really, it's more of a consensus body than a, let's take some votes kind of body. Totally open to the idea of a second seat. Certainly having a policy person in addition to a science person would be helpful, but I did notice that, and, but I did also notice there was only one tribe within there, so.
Anyone else? The public? Come on up.
Let me get my Zoom open.
My name is Joan Mosh. I filled in the position of a member of the public. I wrote a lot, and I haven't seen where I wrote it. I haven't seen it printed, but I also wanted to ask, didn't Peter Windrum also resign as well as Sky Hoyt? Thank you.
That's what was related to us, is that they were members and they are no longer members.
Yes, and just to elaborate, so all of the public, public comments that were solicited during our Big Valley GSP planning and implementation are recorded, for the record. Our Big Valley GSP is hosted on the California Department of Water Resources Sigma Portal. Ms. Mosh, I know you do have a copy of that document. It's a 900-page document, very lengthy. Again, encourage everyone to read it. It's great. But all those are hosted on the Sigma Portal, and those were solicited and recognized as public comments. And Joan did participate as a member of the public, but Joan does not currently hold a seat on the GSPAC, so just want to clarify that. I didn't.
I've already answered. The question was again about Peter Windrum. Yes, he has resigned, so has Sky Hoyt.
Anyone in Zoom? No?
I opened it up, but I haven't checked. There are no hands in Zoom.
Okay. We'll bring it back to the Board.
I did have a question, and I thought it was answered. It was, in some instances, but with the environmental ecosystem position, that's, I think, I'm assuming that's the one that Peter resigned from. So is it one of those agencies that require just to be a part of that agency, not to be residing in that area, or is that a requirement as well?
So that's a great question, Supervisor Crandall, and we've had that discussion, and that's, again, been in, been in the dialogue as we're talking about, you know, who can we have fill these seats? You know, the majority of the GSPAC members would recommend that those folks actually live or work in the basin, but we also understand that, for example, there are folks that may have interests and have interest in the basin that necessarily don't live in the basin but have that expertise. So that's something that we would consider, the GSPAC definitely would consider, if there's someone from an entity that could possibly fill in that seat. Maybe they don't live or work in the basin, but they have. Maybe they don't live or work in the basin, but they have strong expertise or knowledge of the basin, the GSPAC would definitely consider that person. So that was a very political response to your question.
Thank you.
So is there a quorum now with the members you have?
Yes, yeah, and again, we're non-voting, so I don't know if I could lean on Anita to help with that, but, you know, we, we do, we don't do any sort of voting specifically, we seek consensus.
But you still have to have a quorum to have the meetings, correct? Yeah, so my concern is adding more seats when we can't fill these and then we'll not have a quorum to move forward.
Yeah, and that's where we're at as well. So that's why we do have the aspect of making amendments if we want to add seats later on. I would definitely like to get the input from our GSPAC anyhow before adding additional seats, so we do have that opportunity and we can easily come back in the near future to have this further discussion if the charter is approved today.
Okay. Okay, there's no more comments, so when we get some action, or you have a comment?
I'll just add to that, if there's consensus from the board to ask for the GSPAC, yeah, the GSPAC, it's a horrible acronym, to review the request by both Supervisor Green and myself for a membership, if there's consensus for them to review that and then bring it back to us if there's a consensus there. And then also looking to see if it's acceptable to make the amendment as well on the resource to add, to not just say it meets virtually.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with the, the virtual meeting conversation that, that you suggested, saying that it's both.
Other than meeting in person and then continue where it can, where it already has?
And then the other, one more clarification kind of off of Supervisor Crandall's question, you know, the environmental ecosystem, as you know, all tribal governments also have an EPA coordinator, you know, and some have even have, have been funded for a climate resiliency officer, so there's different aspects, I think, of that. So I guess that would be clarification for the board, maybe to come back or the GSPAC to come back, and I'll get that right too with the recommendation, because I do see an opportunity there. And then I would just make a comment that, yep, Big Valley is in the basin, but Scotts Valley is right here too, which that's part of their ancestral lands also, so I think that conversation could be opened up a little bit farther, so I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
Yeah, and I think that's a, that's a great point, Supervisor Simon. We've had that discussion, and I know, you know, we were toggling with that idea. We do work closely with Scotts Valley, especially with our Big Valley groundwater model. We had our consultants also look at Scotts Valley as well. So part of Sigma is you're supposed to coordinate with nearby GSA's. We in Lake County only have one priority basin, and the closest other priority basin is in Ukiah, Santa Rosa, Napa. Doesn't really benefit us, but we do want to work very collaboratively with our other groundwater basins, especially since Scotts Valley does, does border right along our Big Valley basin. I think that is definitely a discussion that we need to entertain in coordinating with Scotts Valley and the former.
Just as a clarification, Vice Chair Simon, you were speaking more along tribal areas rather than basins?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, when you look at the ancestral lands, obviously throughout Lake County, yeah, there are, there are districts, there are counties, but long before that, traditional lands of tribes, especially on the north side or, you know, or on this side with Scotts Valley and Big Valley, you know, I think there's an opportunity there in, in this conversation when we talk about it, instead of opening it up, maybe that opportunity for the environmental ecosystem or underrepresented user could be the Scotts Valley Band, or even, you know, you have Sarah Ryan as one seat from Big Valley, but she may not be the EPA coordinator, there could be another opportunity there. So just would like to have those discussions, because before county lines, before territorial lines were established here in the state of California, there were the traditional lands and cultural boundaries of the tribes, which were all linguistic, not drawn by lines. So just, I guess that's my clarification on that, and maybe getting out there where the board could have that conversation with maybe a couple of the tribes on this side here, instead of adding, because I clearly understand, adding another seat, it's a challenge. We, we had a challenge in the middle of a disaster to get a meeting pulled together yesterday, so that, that would be my request, instead of adding the seat. So that was a long way to say that, I guess. I don't know what's wrong with me, too much coffee today.
Those are my thoughts as well. I think with the two underrepresented seats and the environmental ecosystem, we have opportunities to fill those and just be more creative with that before we start adding seats. I don't want to give that direction right now, because I don't want to be in a place where we can't even have this group meet.
We've got one, two, how many openings now? Three, four, five openings?
Supervisor Green?
I'm okay with kicking the discussion to the GSPAC, and they'll understand better than anybody the difficulty of filling the seats and pulling meetings, but just a semantic thing, underrepresented user could be disadvantaged communities as referenced in the Sigma regulations. And then on page three of this, under the title, organizational structure and membership, the first paragraph describes what we're here doing today, accepting that. So in that, we are approving this revised charter. I don't know that that paragraph needs to be there. If we did strike it, the next paragraph would move up, and it says the GSPAC is composed as an ad hoc advisory committee. I don't believe the words ad hoc are accurate. So the suggestion would be to strike the first paragraph under that heading and to strike the word ad hoc from the paragraph under that. Totally support all the other consensus items that have been brought forward.
Oh, I'm in agreement with adding the language about the meetings, so they comply with Brown Act.
And I see no problem with scratching off the first paragraph, because it does say what we're doing today, and then it'll be the charter that they go by, so I have no issues with that as well. I don't think it changes anything. And I'm looking at Deputy Director Dele Giannis, just to make sure that it doesn't throw a wrench.
Nope, it does not throw a wrench.
Okay.
Also, Lloyd or Anita, I would say Lloyd right now, so I'll make sure we're not doing something we shouldn't be doing here.
Yes, as a point of clarification, if the board is, will decide to move to approve this document or adopt this document by motion, that it would be as amended if there is a consensus to the amendments that were proposed in the course of the discussion.
Thank you, Anita. Thank you, Lloyd.
Thank you both.
Transition learning, it's on the fly.
And if there's no further comments from the board, I move to approve the 2023 Charter of the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency as amended for the resource section and for the organizational structure and membership changes.
We're approving the charter for the advisory committee, so the GSPAC.
It's the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency Charter Document.
Yes.
GSPAC Charter Document. Again, the title, as she explained at the beginning, the title of this item and now the recommended action both reflect a little confusion. So we are sitting as the GSA today approving the 2023 revision of the Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee Charter Document.
That is correct.
Okay, so.
As amended.
So moved with amendments.
Second.
There we go.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marina.